The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for Monday, February 1st, 2021, will please come to order. This evening, we will be once again operating under some altered procedures consistent with the terms of the various executive orders of Governor Hochul, as well as the local public health orders. To that end, we are making remote participation possible via WebEx. Those who are participating remotely are reminded that members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting, with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record, and after completing the comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. And we thank everyone, both those who are here in person and those participating remotely, for their cooperation. And with that, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in remembrance of the more than 441,000 Americans who have lost their life as a result of COVID-19.
(Applause) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of January 18th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President, we have petition number 2021-01 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a petition to rezone from C4 Automobile Oriented Commercial District to C1 General Commercial District, 1333 Lincoln Way East, and this is signed by BK Patel. We also have, we also have a presentation of outstanding and unpaid checks for a period of two years to be voided. This is from the City Controller, Becky Miller. For the next meeting, tonight's meeting, is the presentation of the voided two-year-old checks pursuant to Indiana Code 5-11-10.5. All checks outstanding and unpaid for a period of two years, as of December 31st of each year, are voided and receded back into their original fund. No action by the council is required.
Thank you. The record will reflect that the council has received that information from the controller, and all the legal niceties required by state law have been observed. And with that, we will move past report of special committees, since we have none this evening, and instead, we'll move into ordinances on first reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number 2021-09, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, rescinding Resolution Number 2010-21 and Resolution Number 2012-03 pertaining to petitions of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1802 West Sixth Street. We have taken and delivered, the police delivered the notice to the owner of the property, and we have received a certificate of service. We've also mailed that certified return receipt requested.
Thank you. So the record will reflect that notice of the second reading in public hearing that will occur as currently scheduled at our next council meeting has been delivered, and the record will reflect that that was done, as explained by the clerk, and we appreciate her assistance in that matter. With that, proposed ordinance number 2021-09 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. This evening, we have no resolution, so we will move into ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-01, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone two parcels, total of 1.81 acres, from C1 General Commercial to C7 Automobile Oriented Restaurant Commercial, 5055 and 5603 Grape Road.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2021-01, excuse me, report that they have examined said matter, and in their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The committee report passes 9-2-0.
Thank you. We will then commence with second reading in public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2021-01. At least our first speaker this evening was very eager and has already arrived at the podium, and we'll ask him to begin by stating his name and address for the record.
Hi. Good evening. Mike Huber with Abbott Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening for you to consider our request. Our clients, GW Properties, based out of Chicago, they're also attending virtually, as well on the phone, in case there are some questions you might have specifically for them, or something that I may not be able to answer. They own the two properties effectively surrounding the ABC Warehouse property, the property adjacent to the north, and the property where the fitness center used to be, and the property adjacent to the south, I think where the bookstore was in there. They're wanting to help revitalize that strip plaza. It started to have some, a little bit of issues with some, the use there, and so they want to revitalize it. Part of their strategy is to create two new outlots in the front, running Grape Road, for the purpose of having drive-through restaurants in those two outlots. And so that's the purpose of our proposal. We'd like to, we'd like to rezone to allow the drive-through restaurant uses in those outlots running on Grape Road. We know that there are at least three other C7 drive-through restaurant uses in our Grape Road corridor north of Douglas Road there, including the Steak and Shake immediately to the south. And there are four other C4 auto-oriented commercial uses also right in that area, of course. We think it fits with the zoning of the corridor. I think it'll help really draw some traffic and drive some traffic into that plaza, and be the first step in kind of really starting to hopefully bring that plaza back to life. So we've been working with the city engineering office to try to find, I think they had some comments in there, we're trying to find the right, the best entrance access off of Grape Road for that. That may mean that the current access may go away. We're negotiating that with all of the property owners along there. Additionally, we reached out, contacted by the apartment complex behind us. They had some issues with some of the potential redevelopment of the redevelopment of the north property, in particular where it's kind of close to the apartments up there. We're going to make sure that we're in contact with them through the site development process. We're not actually at the site development process yet, to make sure that we limit or mitigate any impacts that might be on their property as well. So with that, if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Huber?
Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Huber. Looking at that site, it, it needs some prettying up and some new life, so it's really wonderful that this, the company that owns it is going to work on redeveloping it. As part of the, I guess I have two questions. The first would be regarding just landscaping and layout. Will there be landscaping between Grape Road and the, you know, the restaurants, and just kind of softening that look?
Yeah, so we'll meet all of the requirements of the current city zoning ordinance, which does require front landscaping, kind of separating between there. So, yeah, that will be part of the landscape plan of the premises.
And then, do you have any idea what will happen behind with the other two buildings?
Currently, no. I think this is kind of the first step in the process, is to try to get these rezoned. I think he's got a couple of potential buyers and users for these, so it's trying to accelerate those, and then hopefully that will help make those, those other spaces behind that much more marketable.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Just as a matter of curiosity, since I've been known to drive through, drive through line myself from time to time, and this may not be known at this point in time, but is there any specific information that you can share with us about which restaurants may be occupying this space?
I think at one of the, at least one of them is looking like potentially Taco Bell. Now, I don't know about the other one yet, but...
Sounds good. All right. Other questions for Mr. Huber? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else who's physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then we will ask if anybody participating remotely wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9-2-0. Proposed ordinance number 2021-02, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a POD amendment to allow fuel pumps in convenience store with parking reduction at 520 Bittersweet, southeast corner of Bittersweet and Vestula. The petitioner is requesting postponement.
Thank you. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to postpone second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2021-02 indefinitely at the request of the petitioner and petitioner's legal counsel.
So moved.
A motion has been...
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mammalanti. It was going to be a grab bag, otherwise. A motion has been made and seconded to postpone indefinitely second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2021-02 at the request of the petitioner's legal counsel. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council?
I just want to make one, Mr. Huber. You did make the petitioner aware that they had a certain amount of time. I don't want anyone to think we didn't make them aware that they have...
It is in the letter.
I did have that conversation with him, and even in the letter, the attorney makes reference to that time period, so they're well aware that this isn't an indefinite matter that can continue to linger indefinitely, but that they'll have some time to be able to do their due diligence before they make a presentation. Good question. Other questions or comments? If not, then, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The motion to postpone passes 9-2-0.
Let me just go ahead and talk about that now.
Proposed ordinance...
Madam Clerk, if we could for a moment, Mr. Mammalanti has a comment that he wishes to make.
All right. Thank you. I think it'd be, per the president's request, I just want to outline some details regarding the upcoming Zoom meeting. The developer and the team of their attorneys will be hosting an informational meeting that will allow residents in the general vicinity to ask any questions and/or express any concerns. That Zoom meeting will be held February 10th, 2021, at 7:00 Eastern Standard Time, again via Zoom. The meeting ID number is 971-7336-2565. Passcode is 562355. Even though that they're hosting it, we'll be using my council Zoom account, so don't be confused if it says, has my name on there. So also want to take this opportunity to give special thanks to Councilman Hicksonbaugh and Hazen for their efforts in communicating and kind of orchestrating this meeting, and to answer all the questions for these residents, give them an opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're ready, Madam Clerk.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-07, an ordinance amending Chapter 58 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly referred to as the traffic code. This is amending the traffic code, municipal lot number three on First and Church Street, and the petitioner is requesting an amendment.
Thank you. And we have the committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on public health and safety, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2021-07, report that they have examined said matter, and in their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes 9-2-0.
Which leaves us then with the matter of the petitioner's request to amend the proposed ordinance, and Mr. Hinkle, if we could prevail upon your good graces, could you provide us with a little background about the nature of the amendment only, and then we'll move into the ordinance itself subsequent to that?
Thank you. Pat Hinkle, Corporation Counsel for the City of Mishawaka. My office is here at City Hall. Can I, let me first walk around and pass out this map, so everybody knows. I'm sure you probably all know where it is anyway, but... So you know what parking lot we're talking about.
Excuse me.
All right. Now that we are oriented geographically, I guess is the word, can you touch on the amendment so that we can take a vote on that and clean up that portion of the proceeding before we move into the hearing itself?
Okay. The amendment was just to clean up the language a little bit, to make it clear that the people that have a parking permit, a special permit, can still park in the lot between the hours of 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. So the amendment, it was amended just to make the language more clear, that no, there's no parking between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM except for exclusive reserve parking space permits. And the first time that we wrote it, it made sense to me, but kind of ran it by some other people, and they thought it was a little confusing the way it was amended. So this is a cleaner way to do it. The current statute, or current ordinance, says with respect to lot 3, two-hour parking only except for exclusive reserve parking space permits. And this would, what this would do would eliminate the two-hour parking only between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. So in other words, unless you have a special permit, you can't park there overnight, or can't even park there for two hours. And the reason that we're doing this is because we've had, as you all may know, we've had some problems in that parking lot with crimes being committed, with violence, shootings. All this stuff is occurring around 2:00 AM, 2:30, 3:00 AM in the morning. People leaving an adjacent bar.
Mr. Hinkle, if I can interrupt you?
Do you need any more?
If we can, let's take care of the amendment and the ordinance, and then we can move into your presentation, and I'm sorry to interrupt your flow, but...
That's all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to amend the proposed ordinance, as explained by Corporation Counsel.
So moved.
I just have a quick question.
Let's get a second, and then you can ask questions. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to amend the proposed ordinance, as explained by Corporation Counsel. Are there any questions, Mrs. Volker?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that what I'm seeing on the screen is the amended version of the ordinance.
What do you say, what does it say on the screen?
It's no parking between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM except for the exclusive reserve parking space permits.
Yes.
You should see the old and the new.
The new, and I would agree with Mrs. Volker, what she just read is reflected in the ordinance that's in front of us this evening, and it makes reference to that.
Right. I don't have an old. I just have a new.
It would be in the prior packet, but the one that's in the packet for this meeting does appear to me to reflect Mr. Hinkle's proposed amendment.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions for Mr. Hinkle on the amendment, and then we'll move into the hearing itself? Thank you, then. A motion has been made and seconded to amend the proposed ordinance, as explained to us by Corporation Counsel. Any other questions or comments with regard to the amendment only? If not, then, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the proposed amendment?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The amendment passes 9-2-0.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move into second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2021-07, as amended. Anyone wishing to speak in favor has, at least one individual has already come forward, so, Mr. Hinkle, the floor is yours once again.
Okay. Pat Hinkle, again, Corporation Counsel. My office is in the City Hall of the City of Mishawaka. Again, as I was saying before, we're, we want to close parking for this lot between midnight and 6:00 AM because of the law enforcement problems we've been having. We have an inordinate amount of police calls to the downtown area during those hours in response to problems that occur in that parking lot and also in a bar adjacent to it. And so the idea being is that if we have the authority to close the lot, in other words, the ordinance changes, we can close the lot to parking between midnight and 6:00 AM, that we can, the police can then ticket vehicles for being parked there. People will have to move their vehicles out of that parking lot at midnight, and it will encourage people to go home and to not hang around and tailgate and fight and shoot at each other and do all the other bad things that have been occurring in that parking lot. It's been so bad that we have, that the police department has, the police officers that are on duty in that shift, they all tend to congregate towards the downtown area at about that time of night, so that they're there to assist their fellow officers in the event some kind of fight breaks out or some occurrence, because it's usually involving 12 people, 15 people, sometimes as many as 30, all coming out at the same time from, from the local bar. So we would want to try to, try to stop that from happening, is what we're... And so that's the reason for the amendment to the parking ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hinkle, Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. When you say closing a parking lot, how do you intend to do that? I mean, are you just patrolling it, or how are you going to keep people from parking there?
Well, we can't, we're going to put a sign there that says you can't park there anymore, and if the cars are there, the police are going to ticket them and have them towed away. But I would leave that up to the police department to decide how best to enforce it. We could actually close the entrances to that lot to prevent people from coming in. The only problem with that is, is that we have the reserved parking space permit, and there are certain people that are permitted to park in there. And we also have, if you look at your map, there are some spots there, if we could look at the parking lot, there's some spots that are butt right up against that building in the front, that's at Mishawaka Antiques. And so there are people that live in those apartments up there, and they, they park there, and that would prevent them from getting in and out. So we're probably not going to close the lot. What we're just going to do is, if you don't have a permit, you can't park there, and from those hours, except, and so that would, that would allow these people to still park there that live in the area that have permits, or anyone else that can apply for a permit and get one. I might also add that I did talk to, first of all, I looked to see what time some of the other establishments in that area closed. Most of them are closed by then. I did check with the owner of Doc Pierce's, and she had no objection to this at all. They're closed long before that. Other, just from my own, from what I've been told by the police officers, and I did talk with the guy at the Mishawaka Antiques.
Oh, did you talk to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did you talk, did you talk to the Table 97?
I did not. I did not get a hold of that. The guy, but the other problem is, is that vandalism of vehicles, and the guy from Mishawaka Antiques said the window got broken out on their van one evening from, you know, people hanging around in the parking lot, and things going on. A lot of beer cans and bottles and vomit and everything else in that area, and it all happens, you know, after midnight, as you might expect. That's the worst time of the evening. That's when it's really draining our police force. They can't patrol the rest of the city because they're all, they're all congregated downtown, or they all got to get down there to help whoever's taking the call. And there are an inordinate amount of calls from, calls for assistance, or calls, police calls, from Smith's Downtown on Lincoln Way East, and there, you see that, that's also marked on this map. People that, patrons of Smith's tend to use this parking lot. They've been seen coming in and out of this parking lot. We have, in certain instances, video from Doc Pierce's showing people coming out of Smith's and involved in altercations in that parking lot. And there, it won't stop the calls from Smith's itself. We got a whole bunch of those coming to, for fights in the bar, fights around the bar, that sort of thing, broken windows, all kinds of stuff going on in there. The other, I've been kind of closely involved with this because we're trying to get their license revoked in front of the Alcohol Tobacco Commission, but we have problems with fights breaking out inside the bar, and then people leaving the bar, and the fights just continuing in areas around the bar, but in particular, back into the parking lot. So that's where we stand with, that's the reason for this.
Do I still have any questions? Also, how are the police going to be notified of the cars that have the parking permit? Do they have a tag on it or something?
I assume so, yeah. There's some kind of permit that...
I know there's a permit, but I don't know whether it's marked on the car.
It is.
Is it? Okay. Another question is, you're saying Smith's Bar, you're trying to revoke the license or have it revoked, and that if they go out of business, is that parking lot going to still be closed at midnight, or is that going to be amended to be opened again?
Well, that would be something that the mayor and the police chief would have to decide, and I would assume, I don't know. I don't know what they want to do.
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
I know why you're doing it.
Right.
And I was just wondering whether that nuisance is taken care of, whether that would facilitate opening up that parking lot again.
Yeah. And...
Because I do know Doc's used it. The docs use that parking lot, and so does Table 97. I know they're not there after midnight normally, but I knew, I know they, they use it. I've used it before, going into those establishments and that, so...
Yeah. So that, that's the idea. It's not, like, like I say, it's...
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Mr. Compton?
Pat, thank you very much for doing this. Talked to you about this when... After one of the incidents, I made a recommendation that was stronger than this, but I think this will work. Commenting off of something that Mr. Emmons said, I don't think, you know, this going into effect at midnight won't affect any other businesses around there. And it sends a signal to any new businesses that might come into the area that, you know, we just... We're not... We can't deal with that. It's just not safe, and it's not what's good for our community in the downtown. You made a comment, and maybe I misunderstood you. I thought you said something about if we're allowed to do this. When you say if we're allowed, do you mean because of us, the council? Or is there some other concern hanging up here?
No, I was meaning if the council passes the ordinance, yeah.
Okay. That was my... I thought maybe there was some other
No.
technicality hanging out there
No.
that would not allow this, but...
Yeah, I was just saying that you...
Very good.
You guys got to allow us to do it.
No, I appreciate it, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Mrs. DeMae?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hinkle, good afternoon, good evening. Can you tell me the hours of operation for Smith's?
Well, yeah. They... That's a good question, because they claim that they close at 2:00. But I'm not sure that that's actually when they close. That might be last call. But they're usually around 2:00, 2:00 in the morning. He said at the hearing that about 1:30, they close the upstairs, and at 2:00, they close the downstairs. But these calls are occurring at that time or later. Some of them is late, it's 3:00, 3:00 AM.
And is this daily, or is it just Friday and Saturday nights?
Friday and Saturday, mostly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mammalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Hinkle, for your presentation. Couple of questions. First off, have we received quite a few numbers... Number of complaints from the residents that have the permit parking, that their parking spot has been taken?
No.
No? Okay. And the next question is, you know, I agree that this would probably solve the parking issue, but I'm not so sure that it would solve the fighting issue. I just... If a fight breaks out, and they're going to migrate to a large, open area, I don't think one guy's going to say, "Let's stop. There's a sign here. We can't fight here."
Right.
My point being is, what if it persists?
Yeah.
Gatherings, fights, et cetera, in this parking lot once this has been closed for permit only?
Well, a little more background on it, maybe that'll help. One of the problems we've been having with the Alcohol Tobacco Commission is that Smith's says, "Look, this isn't our parking lot. We don't control what goes on in that parking lot. It's the city's job to control that parking lot." And they're putting it back on the city. So, our response to it, "Okay, we're going to control that parking lot. We're going to close it, or we're not going to let people park there after midnight." So, that was sort of the reason... One of the reasons why we did this. And it also was kind of... It was a suggestion from one of the excise police officers that we do that, because Smith's is trying to say, "Well, we should keep our license, and we should be able to keep our business open until 2:00 AM." You know, their argument at the hearing is, "This parking lot's right across the street from the police station. They can't keep their parking lot controlled over it." Well, that's what we're going to do. We want to keep control of it. Fights, we can't stop them from fighting, but at least their cars won't be parked there, or their cars will be gone, or maybe they'll go home, or, you know, that sort of thing. And so, it would lessen the odds of it occurring, but, you know, the... It's in response to an argument made by Smith's against the city in front of the commission, and also in response to a suggestion made by one of the excise officers with the Alcohol Tobacco Commission. But to more directly answer your question, people are going to fight. You know, they're... Right now, all of this... All these problems aren't occurring in the parking lot. That's the other thing that Smith's trying to argue, is that it's all in our parking lot. No, it isn't. A lot of it's occurring inside the bar, around the bar, in the front of the bar, on the sidewalk, and that sort of thing. This is just one area that we can exert, or we can implement some action that can lessen the likelihood that problems occur in the downtown area at night. And so, that's one thing we're looking at. And I also wanted to add this, too, is that the... The bar has never said to the city, and in fact, refuses to do this, "Close at midnight." I mean, they insist on being open until 2:30, 3:00 in the morning, and that what happens is that they're the only one open that late, pretty much. I think the Phoenix is open late. But people at the Phoenix, I'm told, don't park in that lot behind Smith's. It's too far to... You know, they park right on the street in front of the Phoenix, and they don't have that many... As many customers as Smith's does, so... But, yeah, we... That's been broached with them as well. And they're... He does not and will not close... Changes hours or close. Now, he claims he did, but still open until 2:00 o'clock in the morning.
Mr. President, if I may do a quick follow-up question. I recall hearing, not reading, but hearing the information that the owner was going to change some music themes, et cetera, to help kind of prevent some fights. Has that occurred?
Yeah. He says he has. You know, I think he got rid of certain programs that were...
I guess the question is, has the calls of service decreased since he's done that?
No. Not... We're still getting... We still had... We had two calls this last weekend or the weekend before. Usually every Monday morning, or just about every Monday morning, we get reports from Lieutenant Repert about what happened at Smith's over the weekend. You know, the police are getting tired of it, too. I mean, the police... And it's, you know, the... We had one incident where Officer Dubay was assaulted by one of the people that, you know, he was trying to... He had to arrest her after that, but, I mean, it's just a rowdy bunch. And we don't have that at the other bars downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mammalenti. Mrs. DeMae?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we close the lot here that we're talking about, Main Street is still open.
Yes.
There's plenty of spaces there. Since all the restaurants are going to be closed by then, are there restrictions on the parking on the street as to what time there's no parking on the street?
You know, that's a good question. I... I don't think you can park longer than two hours on the street, but I don't know. That's a good question.
I think after 5:00 o'clock.
After 5:00 o'clock, what happens?
You can park.
Okay.
We can look into it, though.
Yeah, so the location is about the same, from Smith's to the parking lot and Smith's to the parking on Smith's on Main Street.
Yeah.
So, they could congregate there for a...
Well, yeah, then I guess we'd have to... Well, it's like whack-a-mole. We'll have to go after them there, you know, but this...
Thank you. Mr. Compton?
Yeah, I think that, for me, and I suggest this to the counsel, that the issue is a city parking lot and a responsibility that we have for that parking lot. The owner, what he said, we may not like it, but it makes sense. Here's this lot that belongs to the city, not them. Their patrons use it, isn't illegal. We need to patrol the lot. I don't buy into that argument completely, of course, but there is some credence to it. As far as parking on the street, I understand the Councilman DeMae's comments, but that's... To me, that's completely different at that point. That's a completely different thing. The owner can't say, "Hey, that's a city street. That's not..." I mean, I suppose he could, but it's not the same as that parking lot. And I think, starting this at midnight, it... To me, it just makes sense as maybe step one. Mr. Mammalenti said, "What if it doesn't work?" Well, I guess we cross that bridge when we get there, but I think a few people get their cars towed. Word gets out. The owner starts saying, "Hey, you don't want to park back there." I think that solves some problems to some degree. But thank you. Again, thank you.
Mr. Compton? Mr. Emmons?
Pat, does Smith's have security at any time of their event?
They have. Well, he says he has bouncers.
No, I meant security. I mean, a bouncer is not security. I mean, somebody, a law enforcement policeman that's off-duty or county sheriff. Does that have anybody?
I think I can comment on that from what the police chief told me. It's been so bad there, they won't let me.
I'm in downtown, and I'd like to speak.
I mean, they're afraid somebody... One of their officers is going to get hurt or they're going to get drugged into something there.
Okay, so there's no law enforcement?
I know, there's no Mishawaka... I don't think they allow Mishawaka. I don't think county is doing it.
Or even South Bend. I mean, you know, they're off-duty. I didn't know whether they had security within the facility and that, to kind of swell anything before it starts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Other questions for Mr. Hinkle?
I think this has a...
Mr. Hazen?
The way I look at this, this is just going to be a tool to help the police try to control what's going on right now, and also kind of satisfy the ABC board and that. That's what... We can't control tonight if they move to Main Street or if they move across to the library parking lot or whatever. Unfortunately, the ultimate goal is going to be to try to shut them down or take their liquor license, right? They have not been good neighbors for a long time.
Correct.
And that process is still evolving, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Hinkle, then let me add my thanks to you for the work that you've done on this issue, not only with regard to this ordinance, but also with regard to the separate actions that you've taken. And
Thank you.
this evening, we've had a lot of conversation in conjunction with this ordinance. Don't pack up yet. I'm not done with you.
Oh, okay. Right there. Sorry.
Soon, Counselor. But we've had a lot of conversation, for obvious reasons, about the relationship between this ordinance and one particular business located in downtown. And that makes good sense. Although, I think it does raise the question whether it really should be... Whether it's really appropriate for us to take the action that's being proposed based upon one particular circumstance. So, if we kept for a couple of seconds, I'd like to broaden the conversation without worrying about the factual evidentiary connection between a particular business and the parking lot in question. Is it accurate that when we compare this parking lot to other municipal-owned parking lots throughout the downtown or owned anywhere in the city of Mishawaka and owned by the city, that there is an inordinate number of problems, police calls, acts of violence, that take place at this location as opposed to other locations under our control?
My understanding is that yes.
So, there... And this would be a matter of concern to the city, irrespective of whether there was a nexus between those problems and a particular business. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So, would you agree with me that this is a matter that has general application and supports public health and safety in the city of Mishawaka without worrying about the impact on any particular business as such?
Yes. I agree.
And the action that we take this evening will have no impact on the actions that are going to take separately through the regulatory process for alcohol licenses. That will proceed on a separate path and a separate track from the action we take this evening. Is that accurate?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Just one final comment. I would be in favor of us continuing to monitor these type of circumstances wherever they occur. This is... This was the low-hanging fruit. It's the most obvious one to begin with. But I think it begs the question whether we ought to take a look at our other municipal lots and take a similar action. No, that we don't have some other, you know, similar problems in those other locations. But I think, at least from my standpoint, I'd be open to us taking a look at this as a comprehensive across-the-board policy, if it makes sense. And I appreciate the limitation that's been built in to allow for those who rent the spaces from the city to be able to have ongoing access. So, again, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Hinkle? And thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in support of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone. Then is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And while you're doing that, sir, if you wouldn't mind, it's our standard rule here that people remove their hats when they're in the building, so thank you for doing that. And with that, if you'd please come forward and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Ryan Smith, owner of Smith's Downtown. My address is 629 East Third Street, right across the street, Mishawaka, Indiana, 46544. And I'm not sure what the ordinance is. I was just notified that there was ongoing talk about my establishment live on the website or what have you. So, I would like to know, I guess, what the ordinance is about, and if I... There's any questions you would like to ask me, I would love to answer them.
And we'll get to that in a moment. And typically, this is not an opportunity for people to come to the podium and pose questions to the counsel. It's a time for public comments, but in light of the reasonable nature of the question that you've posed, let me summarize this ordinance. It indicates that with regard to the municipal lot, Lot Number 3, located in downtown Mishawaka, which is a lot bordered by Church Street, First Street, and then behind Doc Pierce's and the other restaurants, that that... The parking restrictions for that lot will include no parking between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM except for exclusive reserve parking space permits since we have people who purchase a permit and are entitled to be able to park there. So, that is, in essence, a summary of what the ordinance that's before us says. So, with that, do you have additional comments that you'd like to make before I open up the floor for questions from... For you from the counsel?
Pretty much, well, I mean, my customers usually are there till about 2:00 in the morning or so, and I, you know, am a business downtown. And also, from what I hear, Absolutely is going to be opening back up, and they will be open till 1:00 AM on the weekends, and that will also be another business that would be impacted by that.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the counsel for this gentleman? Mr. Mammalenti?
Well, Mr. Smith, thank you for rushing down here and asking some questions that you may have. On a normal weekend evening, how full is that parking lot, I guess? Would you have any idea?
Um, I mean, usually about half-full.
Half-full or so?
Mm-hmm.
And do they park there just because it's close to Walk Chair Establishment, or there is no other parking nearby?
Well, there's parking in some of the different areas, but people, actually from most of the establishments down there, they go from bar to bar to bar. So, it's not just my people that are there.
Sure.
There's people that go to Shine Bar. There's people that, you know, as I said when Absolutely was open, there's people that park there for them.[1673.31] Absolutely was open, there's people that park there for them. And also, not like I was also saying, too, there is people that go to Table 97. I'm not sure what their weekend hours are, but I believe they're open till maybe 11:00 or 12:00, something like that. But then also, too, you would have employees that would be there later than those hours that use that lot also.
So, would it be a major hindrance if that, if your patrons were not able to park there?
Well, the thing is, it's looking to the point to where, you know, if they were there after midnight, they'd be ticketed, or towed, or something along those lines. And that would deter business for anybody that works a late night down there, or what have you. Plus, there's people that live in the apartments that are right behind the antique shop, that they have friends over, or something like that, you know? That would also impair them from, like, having any company, because there's only so many limited spots for those apartments.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Other questions from the council?
Certainly, let me ask a couple of questions, then. I have a foggy recollection of some quotes that I've read from you in the newspaper here in the recent past.
Mm-hmm.
And I won't attempt to repeat them verbatim, but my recollection is that, at least in the newspaper articles, and even in, newspaper articles aside, maybe this evening, would you agree with me that there have been incidents of fights and other acts of violence that have taken place in that parking lot within the last several years?
Yes. Actually, we hadn't really had many issues up until this last year. So, every time, like, for my license, I'm required to go in front of the Liquor License Commission every year to report. And there has been a city attorney there every year. I said, up until this last year, when they decided to, you know, protest my renewal, and everything has been fine up until this last year, because of the issues we had with some different promoters and things like that about, you know, four or five years ago. We've changed all that up and followed along with the city. And I believe it's Mr. Rodgerman, I believe, is one of the city attorneys.
And I'm going to stop you, because you're going way beyond the scope of the question that I asked you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was just trying to, trying to give you a little background with it.
I understand. I appreciate that. But you had a chance to speak, so if I could, I'd like to ask you some additional questions. So, you agree with me that there have been incidents of violent activity that you're aware of as well, that have taken place in this parking lot?
Yes.
And would you agree with me that those acts of violence have taken place after 12:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay. Would you also agree with me that there is on-street parking in Lincoln Way in front of your establishment on both sides of the street? Is that accurate?
Yes, there's about four spots in front of my place.
And then, would you agree with me that there is also on-streets parking on Main Street, directly around the corner, on both sides of the street?
Yes.
And then, there is also parking on the far north side of the block, both on the CVS side of the street, and then on the, on the block that you're located on?
Yes.
And that there are other municipal parking lots that are located throughout downtown that patrons of your establishment can use when they're visiting your place of business? Is that accurate?
I would say there is.
Including a parking garage that was built via contribution from the city of Mishawaka down at the mill. Is that accurate?
Uh, no one from my establishment's going to walk that far.
Is there, are you aware of the fact that there's a parking garage down there?
Um, I thought it was for the apartments.
In addition to the other...
I did not know it was city use.
Okay. So, there's a parking, would you agree with me that there's a parking garage there in addition to all the land lots, if you will, that are located throughout downtown?
I believe, I guess so.
And again, I, I want to make sure that you understand, when I summarized this ordinance earlier, did you hear me indicate that the lot in question is going to be open and available for parking by your customers, any other person who wishes to park there, up until 12:00 a.m. in the evening?
Uh, when I came in, you told me what the ordinance said.
Okay. Um, then, and that the parking restriction, except for people who have parking spaces, will only be in place from 12:00 a.m. until 6:00 a.m.? Point being that at 6:00 a.m., the lot would, once again, become available throughout the entirety of the day for anybody who wants to visit your establishment, or any other establishments in downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I don't want to get into the back and forth about the pending action before the ABC, because that's not, that's outside our scope and is not in front of us. But I will say, just as a comment, that, you know, it's my understanding, from direct communication with the police department, and that's been validated by my friend and colleague, Councilman Hazen, who happens to be a former chief of police as well, that our understanding is that our police department has declined the opportunity to allow our off-duty officers to work for you in a part-time capacity as security officers. Is that accurate?
That's very accurate.
Okay. I think that's it in terms of the questions I have to ask you at this point. I appreciate your answers, sir. Any other questions from the council? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Compton?
I, I just have a, a comment, Mr. Smith. First of all, thank you for coming down. I appreciate that. And I can appreciate your predicament. But we have a responsibility for the safety of the people in that lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you might have even stated that before, that that's a city lot. So, that's what we're doing. So, you understand that this isn't necessarily personal, although, you know, most of this, most of the actions that have, that happened in that lot have come from your patrons, most of them, not all of them, but most of them. And we feel like we need to do something. And, and this limits what a city can do for what's going on in that lot. And I think, as Mr. Hazen put it, a tool for the police to react to this. Because up to this point, they really didn't have much, other than stand there and wait for your patrons to come out and ticket them for public intoxication, and, and harass them with DUIs and things like that. That might be going on. I don't know. But I, I, I think this is a better way, and a, and a more structured way, if you will, of handling this. Once a person's car gets ticketed or towed, word's going to get around. You're going to tell patrons. Your bartender's going to talk to, say, "Hey, don't park back there after midnight. You know, you're going to get towed, or you're going to get ticketed." So, this is our way of trying to deal with, with the, the violence and the issues that take place that late at night in the parking lot. You make some good points about the people that live in there, and they might have a friend overnight, you know, or something like that. How do we deal with that? I think Mr. Hinkle heard that, and we'll try to figure that out. But I, I, we need to do something. Unfortunately, it will have an impact. It could have, I won't say it will, it could have an impact on your business. So, but that's what we, we feel like we need to do, and that's, that's why this is in front of us now. Thank you.
Another question's for Mr. Smith. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Then, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone. Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demig?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The proposed ordinance, as amended, passes 920.
Thank you. We will then move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. And we will begin with anybody who is physically present who wishes to speak under physical, our privilege of the floor. I'm sorry. Then, we will extend the same invitation to those participating remotely who wish to speak under privilege of the floor. Thank you. With that, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move into new business. Is there any new business to come before the council? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, we have the change of this, the mayor has requested the state of the city be given to the council on March 22nd, 2021. You would need to suspend your rules.
Thank you. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to suspend our council rules and grant the mayor's request to conduct the, and receive the State of the City address on March 22nd, 2021, at a location to be determined in the future.
Mr. [inaudible].
Second. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the council rules and grant the mayor's request to hold the State of the City address on March 22nd, 2021, at, at a location to be determined. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Then, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demig?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passes 920.
Thank you.
Then you have the April meeting.
And since we have started the momentum with regard to changing dates, based upon the conversation that we had in our pre-meeting, and the practice amongst our local school corporations to hold spring break during the first week of April, and this year, our first meeting in April would fall during spring break, and anticipating that there will be several council members who will be out of town during that week. At this point, if it is the pleasure of the council, a motion would be in order to change the date of our first regular council meeting in April from Monday, April 5th, to Monday, April 12th. Second. Motion has been made and seconded to change the date for our first meeting, regular meeting, in April of this year, from April 5th to April 12th. Any additional questions or comments from the council? If not, then, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demig?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The motion passes 920.
Thank you. Other new business to come before the council? Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Hinkle on the development over on Sixth Street with Pipers. I sent you a little text the other day, thanking you, thanking you, thanking you for bringing this somewhat to a close. And that, I know we're going to roll on at our next meeting. And that, you've not only made me happy, but you've made a number of the residents very happy. I've talked to some of them since I got your, your email, and that, and they're delighted. They're just hoping that once it's passed, that they do clear out all those cars, get them out of the, the area that's been no longer a junkyard, and that. So, I really don't know if that's a, how much he's going to be involved in that, whether he's just going to walk away, or whether he's going to be, have stipulations put that he hasn't cleaned out all those cars, or what. Maybe next meeting, he'll have that information for us. And that, I would appreciate that. But again, thank you for all your work in getting this problem bowed, and that. I really appreciate all your work and, and cancer, I don't worry that, but, oh, and that, in resolving this situation that's been going on for a number of years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Other new business to come before the council? Then, I will add my thanks to Mr. Hinkle and Mr. Prince for the work that they've done on that same issue, but also my thanks and acknowledgement to our council attorney, Mike Triple, who took the lead on drafting the ordinance that is in front of us. So, Mr. Triple, thank you for your role in helping with that process as well.
I'll second that. Thank you for bringing that up.
You are welcome, my friend. The only item of new business I want to remind the council and the public of is that on Monday, February 8th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, the council will once again be conducting an informational meeting, and the topic de jour will be TIF bonds and some thoughts on local stimulus programs that the administration has. That meeting, as has been our practice, will also be broadcast remotely via WebEx, and there is information available on that. So, we certainly look forward to an interesting evening and a presentation by Mr. Prince of some illuminating information. And with that, if there's no other business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.